Good evening, and I'll call to order the October 16th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. And tonight, our pastor, Josh Fraser, can't be here. And what I'd like to do is, after our pledge of allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence. And I'd like to do that moment of silence and also call, and for us to remember, we had a register of deeds that passed away last week. Her name was Helen Davis, and she retired in 1994. I believe she served as registered deeds from around 1990 to 1994. And then she worked as a clerk in that office for a number of years. But she passed away, and I'd appreciate if everybody would remember her. And also, the family, her family, and then the family of Fred Hall, who was laid to rest in the Green Hill Cemetery this week, coming home from Vietnam. But we'll do their pledge first, and then after that, we'll do the moment of silence in honor of those two. So if anyone, please stand for the pledge.
... pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to freedom of life, for which your stand is on one nation, on our own, and in the visible, but for your citizens.
in the County of Haywood, North Carolina Code of Ordinances. Our county attorney Frank Queen, Development Services Director Garen Bradish, and Development Services Coordinator Jody Ferguson will conduct this. And then after that, we'll have a comment session.
Garen and Jody are going to open this with probably the biggest actual change in our ordinance, which is in the Chapter 160, the High Impact Ordinance. This deals with issues of especially crypto mining and that kind of land use. We've made proposed changes in Chapter 160. High-impact ordinance is for things that have a big impact on the community around them or right in the neighborhood of them, and it imposes some special use restrictions on those kinds of properties. Before, we got to the crypto mining part of it, high-impact stuff was things like quarries, which make a lot of noise and can create dust and stuff, and things like that. There's some others in the ordinance. But Jody and Garen have worked really hard and done a bunch of research and come up with an excellent revision that talks about that, and they're going to talk about that in the 160 section. And then the rest of it is, we'll talk about, and I'll answer questions. It's all routine about the rest of it. Go ahead, guys.
So, back in January, I think it was when you came to us, when there was a lot of concern about what was going on in Cherokee County with the crypto mines that popped up out there. So for that time till now, we've been working with the planning board, and Jody's going to go through kind of this presentation, a short presentation of what we've done in that time to come to the decision of putting this into the High Impact Ordinance and how it fits into there. We just felt it was the best place for it. So any questions you have, we can answer.
Hello. So with High Impact Ordinance, the planning board, and I want to recognize our chairman, Dave Gilderslie, is here this evening. He's been really instrumental with this and leading the planning board as well. So our timeline, we just kind of put this together for you all so that you could see the work that we've done. We worked with the Haywood Electrical Membership Corporation to talk to us about how they viewed a crypto mine as a customer, and they just saw them as another industrial customer. So that said to us, hey, we probably really do need to put something in place. So as we went on, we just worked through various things, and so I just provided this timeline to kind of help everybody see where we were. One of the most impactful things that we did, and the few slides that I put into this presentation for you all, was go to Cherokee County. We met with their Board of Commissioners Chair, their Assistant County Manager, and one other member of their Board of Commissioners. And we went around and actually toured some of these crypto mines. So this is the mine that gets all the publicity. This is the one that you see on the news and the one that they get all the noise complaints about. It is kind of in the middle of nowhere, and I'll show you that in just a second. But they ran power for a long, long way to get to this place, and you can see where they've started to put a sound barrier up around this facility. But at the time we got there, it had stalled. The neighbors were not happy about that, and this is the one that you keep seeing on the news. So it may be hard to see in this particular presentation, but just below Highway 64 at the very top, you can kind of see a marker. That is where that crypto mine got placed. And if you look to the left, you can kind of see a golf course there. That is no longer being used as a golf course, but they had a developer interested in purchasing that and then kind of repurposing it as a subdivision. And he actually backed out because of the noise from that crypto mine. He felt like it would just damage any development there in the future. So that deal fell through for them. And so you can kind of see how rural that area is that they put this particular crypto mine. This one you may recognize if you've ever been out in that area before, but it used to be, I think, the Coats American Plant that's right along the road in Marble. This one has been doubled inside, excuse me, doubled in size, and the white buildings are new. They don't get a lot of complaints about this one, and I think it's because everything's kind of inside and not so outside and exposed like the other one. This is the first one that we actually went to, and whenever we pulled up, their security person came out immediately to run us off. They did not want us there at all. They wanted to know what our business was, and so not friendly, not friendly at all. This one, they kind of opened the noise up to face the road, and that's the side that this picture is actually taken from. And then lastly, while we were there, we actually found they had a new mine that was coming in under construction, that they didn't even realize that they had. So, you know, it doesn't take long, I guess, for word to get out. But lastly, the insights that we gained by going down and visiting with these folks is that crypto mines are loud. They increase mining capacity at night, which was something I didn't realize at all. We think they get cheaper power then, and other people aren't using power, so they can just increase. And then that increases the noise, actually, because all your background noise that we're kind of used to during the day, that disappears. And so, anyway, they get louder at night. They use tremendous amounts of electricity. They create very few jobs. We saw, you know, like I said, at the one crypto mine, we saw one guy there, and he was just kind of a security attendant. The one that had the white buildings, there were a few more cars there, but, you know, you didn't see workers moving around or doing anything. And they told us that they have been avoiding paying taxes by leasing their business equipment and not owning the business equipment. So they felt like they just didn't add much to the economy in their area. And they said for us to just, you know, a cautionary tale that once they get their foot in the door, it's very hard to get it closed. And at the particular time, again, this was back in May that we made this visit, they recommended that we put in a moratorium until we could get sufficient, you know, regulations established. So I'm glad we're here, you know, to this point. And then our last slide here is the primary amendments that were made to this ordinance. We added definitions of what a crypto mine is. And then we also added data center. A data center would be something like maybe Facebook or Google, something like that, where they're not mining a cryptocurrency, but processing lots of data. I think there's one in Rutherford County where they had some complaints about them testing their generators and that sort of thing. So we thought, well, why not go ahead and include it here? And so we've done that. In this table, this is just a snippet of the table from the ordinance. This is the part that we've added, and you can see that, you know, we've put in the setbacks. These setbacks are from protected entities, and a crypto mine has a great setback. It's got to be 750 feet from any protected entity. So that really puts them into having a quite large parcel in order to have a mine of any size.
So basically, the changes to the ordinance, like Jody was saying, we went back and forth with planning board, looked at different ways to regulate this. And currently, that ordinance deals with like these setbacks from property lines or these protected entities. So we, number one, we had some meetings with Haywood EMC, things like that. Our power rates make this kind of really not, our rates are much higher than what they're using with their hydropower out there. So that was one factor. So by putting these larger setbacks in on properties, it makes it pretty difficult to find properties that would be, have that type of power supply and be able to meet these setbacks to help reduce noise and things like that. So that's kind of the thought process we went through.
I appreciate, you know, Jody jumping on this. And, you know, the High Impact Ordinance, I think it had like asphalt plants, chemical storage, it was just really things that are just, you don't want in your community. And so we had done that ordinance in 2016, and then, and this is perfect to just add to the ordinance, which is what y'all are doing, I guess, and stuff. And I appreciate the fact that you looked at like the data centers that have a lot of noise and adding those in there. That was good research on doing that, Jody.
Thank you.
Frank used a term early on that stuck in our heads, where he spoke about, we have to make them nice neighbors. And that's what we're trying to do with ordinance. We're not saying you can't do this, but we've got to be a nice neighbor, so.
So the things that the setbacks would be, that would impact the setbacks, would be residential properties, so they'd have to be 750 feet away from a residential property? Give me some examples of that.
So it's only 750 feet from a protected entity. So the protected entities are not something that we amended in this ordinance, and so a residence is not a protected entity. It's going to be things like schools, daycares, hospitals, nursing homes, places where people have no choice but to be, so to speak. I think even correctional facilities are considered a protected entity. But in 2016, when this ordinance came about, a residence was not included as a protected entity, and we did not amend that definition. We just added the crypto mining to this particular ordinance.
I do think it's important that you were so forward-thinking on this. One of your members of the board called pretty early in this process, and frankly, I didn't really even know this was a real concern in rural areas until the board brought it to our attention, and we started learning about it. So it was very proactive of you to step up and make that statement.
Thank you.
Appreciate the attention the planning board has given to this. This has been a topic across the state. I know when I was going to a state meeting, I got calls from Cherokee County and other counties and some of the proactive steps they had taken to make sure that this fits into the community. You know, some of the biggest concerns, and I was glad to see you bring in the power company's expertise in your discussions, because these are a drain on the power grid. They suck a lot of energy, create very few jobs, and if they are placed in the wrong place, it's like a, I guess, a mad hornet's nest right in your ear 24/7, from what I heard from other commissioners. I guess you all experienced that, but, so I appreciate you looking into this and bringing this back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of the changes that are in this packet, how many have we got? Five ordinances, different ordinances in this one? Universally, housekeeping changes because of changes in state law. I used to be an English major. You can't show me paragraphs that I won't want to correct the punctuation and stuff. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of little tiny thingies that are fixed in the thing that just offended me personally. So all of that's been just incorporated all the way through all this stuff. If you all have a, and we published a redlined version of this, of all these changes, and after we published the original one of these, I sat down and looked at it one more time, and I came up with eight more, 10 more changes that were all typographical or grammatical. And that final, final version is what's proposed for you tonight to review. We pass on these. This is the public hearing for this. We pass, am I right? Am I in the right place? Gotcha. So this is the public hearing, and then the version that I want you to pass or that I recommend passing incorporates this last 10 little changes, these typographical changes that we can look at before passage of it next time. Any questions? Anybody else has any about the rest of that? That's all we've got.
Okay, so would anyone care to have public comment on this ordinance that we were talking about? And we're going to have a public comment session, a regular public comment session in just a few minutes. In fact, it's next, but does anybody have any comment on this? Do you know when I'll close that public comment for the public hearing? Is that good, Amy? Okay. Okay, so next, we'll move to public comment session, and I do have one person signed up to speak, is Christopher May. If you would, Chris, just limit your comments, and anyone else that speaks to three minutes, and Amy will let you know when your time's up. So appreciate you coming out tonight. And if you would, just speak into the mic so we can hear you good.
My name's Chris May. I'm from the Bethel Community. I know most of y'all. Lots of things on my list to talk about. I give you some things to think about. Last Monday, where I'm, me and my wife, are owners of several piece of property in this county, and we're natives to here. We found out that we would no longer be in the flood program because we are commercial property owners. There are six of us that isn't here today that are into that. I understand the state, this county don't have money for everything. However, I do not understand this decision was made one year ago, and we found out a week ago. There's an old saying called, "Time is money," correct? A lot of things have changed in this time. Interest rates went up for repairs, cost of everything's went up. If we made this decision a year ago, it's very unfair that we did not find that information out until a week ago. I'm not here to cast blame, point fingers, or anything like that. But again, time's money, correct? I've paid my taxes, I've done my part. The folks that are, the other six people that are in that situation have paid their taxes, done their part, and invested in this community. All we've heard from our governor and the county is, we're here to help. Are we here to help everybody or just a certain amount of people, guys? Is my loss lesser than somebody else's? Think about that. And then number two, is it ethical, ethical to make a decision one year ago, one year ago, and then tell us a week ago, we have no place to go for y'all? Really? Loan rates have changed, so if I want to, you know, repair my property instead of getting a 2% loan or taking advantage of the 0% loan, that's gone. Now, with perfect credit, I look at 10 or 12% interest. That affects me financially one year. Cost of repairs, building materials, and time lost outside the income. So we make this decision to say that six people in this county aren't as important as the other 33. Think about that. Think about what we're saying here. I'm not here begging somebody for money. I'm asking for the same thing that my fellow citizens get, right? Think about that. One year, no notice. Thank you.
Anyone else care to address the board? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns. Does anyone have anything? Jennifer, do you have anything?
Not anything that's not already been addressed.
Okay. Anything, Tommy?
No, other than just comment on Captain Frederick Hall. I think you covered that in the opening statements. It's quite a story, and my condolences, and go out to his family. But, you know, I was three years old when his plane went down and finally got him back to Haywood County. And that gave closure to his family and the ones that remain. So my hat's off to veterans and certainly Mr. Hall.
Now, just flood-related and to Mr. May's comments, I was a little upset myself. We didn't know ourselves that there was a decision made until probably about a week ago as well, maybe two weeks ago, when we got the email. And I asked a specific question this afternoon in a meeting that we had, and I think it'll be addressed here in a few minutes if you want to hang around, so.
Okay, yeah, and I want to give a shout out to everybody that did the planning for Mr. Captain Hall's funeral. I thought it was very well done. I thought Wells Funeral Home did a great job, and whoever was in charge of that, it was very, very appropriate. I stood up on the courthouse lawn as they went by, and it was really, a really somber moment, so I appreciate everybody that had a hand in that. Okay, our next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations, and our first one will be our 2025 reappraisal update, and tax assessor Judy Hickman. Welcome, Judy.
Just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the 2025 reappraisal. One of the biggest questions, of course, we always get is, why are we doing a reappraisal? The North Carolina, North Carolina General Statute 105286 requires counties to do a reevaluation at least every eight years. Haywood County is currently on a four-year cycle, which is recommended by the Department of Revenue. I think eventually, all 100 counties will probably be on a four-year cycle. But a reappraisal resets all of your market values as of January 1 of that reappraisal year. So a little, to tell you a little bit about what the market's doing right now, this time last year, our sales ratio was sitting at 72%. And we just turned in the sales ratio report for June of 2023, and we're sitting at 65%. So that shows you that we're still in a market that's just booming.
Judy, now, so explain that 72%. I guess that's what you're going to be doing here, I guess, in the future.
Yeah. I was gonna, just to give you some visual, this is a residential sale that happened on Jonathan Creek. Sales price, or the sales date, was 822, so it was in August. The sales price was $355,000, and the tax value as of January 1 was $242,000. So it sold for a 47% increase, and what we have it on is the tax value. Here's another home that sold in Maggie Valley, August 11. The sale price was $745,000, tax value was $391,000. So it's a 90% increase. Residential sale in Lake Junalauska, which took place August of 2023, the sales price was $290,000, tax value was $227,900, which is a 27% increase. Residential sale in Beaver Dam, which happened August the 15th, sale price was $480,000, tax value is $344,500. It's a 39% difference. Residential sale located in Waynesville, sale date was August 18. The sale price was $976,000, tax value is $413,400. Have another one in Iron Duff, also occurred August the 11th of 2023, sales price of $377,000, tax value is $249,700. So as you can see, we're seeing a whole lot of increase in the sales price and the sales market. The sales have kind of slowed down a little bit, but the sales price just continues to exceed what we have it on the tax books for. To give you a little bit of what to expect during a reappraisal property visit, right now, all of our real property appraisers are out in the field. They all wear an ID badge. We all knock on the door to let you know who we are and what we're doing there. They may ask you several questions, like what kind of heat source you have, how many beds, how many baths, because that is all characteristics of your home that goes into the appraisal, and we want to be sure that we have the correct data on your home. They may do a walk-around of the home to make sure that the sketch they're looking at reflects the home that they're seeing during the visit. Values are determined by comparing sales of similar properties. The appraisers are, every month, they get the sales from the previous month. They go through all their sales, make sure that they're valid sales, because we only use valid sales to compare properties to. So what you can do in the meantime, if you go to the Haywood County website, which is the www.haywoodnc.gov, you can go there and click on the GIS site. Then you will have the option to pull the property either by the owner name, address, or parcel number. Once you pull that, there's an information column in the left-hand, on the left-hand side, and there'll be a little blue icon that sits at the top that says, "Link to Property Record Card." If you click on that, you can view your property record card, which gives all the information about your real estate. If you click on that, you can view your property record card, which gives all the information about your real estate, about the property, about the home. Um, and it'll also have a drawing of the home on it. So we encourage for everyone to take a look at that. And if you see that something's incorrect or we have the number of bathrooms wrong, uh, let us know because a lot of times when we're out in the field, we don't get the opportunity to talk to taxpayers because they're like us. They're at work during the same hours we're working, so. Um, if you see anything on there, give us a call. We'll be more than happy to, um, come out and talk to someone. We'll explain the property record card. Um, we're looking into maybe going out in the community at different, uh, community events and being there for, for citizens to come by. If they want us to pull their property record card and have it there, we'll be more than happy to go over it with everyone. Um, and explain what all of the codes mean. Um, and if anyone would like for us to come and talk at, at any group meeting, we'll be more than happy to do that as well.
Judy, I just wanted to comment too. So going back to your first slide, um, in 2022, we had 72% for the whole year above the tax value.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah.
January 1st of 2022.
And then so far this year, we're 65%.
Below market value.
Below market value. Now, um, now we do these every four years. We can do them every eight years, but there's a trigger that if, if we were doing them every eight years, we would have to do it next year because
We would.
the state requires by statute, if you're above, is it 20%?
If, if your, um, sales median is 90% or below, you, um, are required to do another reevaluation. And of course, by the first year, because our reevaluation, last one was in 2021, so 2022, we were already at, um, 70, 79, 72%.
So they're requiring, they would require us to do this anyway.
They would have required us to do it. I, as a matter of fact, I had already received a letter from the Department of Revenue.
Right. It said we had to do that.
Yeah.
So I know a lot of people want to try to say, well, you're just doing it because, you know, but we're doing it because the statute says we have to do it.
Right.
And we got to follow the law.
Right.
And that's what we're going to do. Um, and then, well, that's all I had right now. So anybody else have any comments they want to make? I mean, I, I, I'm in real estate all the time and, and I see it. Believe me, I see it. It's, it's phenomenal, really, what, what I see day in and day out.
It's tough when you're a taxpayer, you know? That, that's the people it's affected and our local people, but same time, I know if you're trying to sell a place or, or, uh, you want your property to be valued as much as it can be, but still, uh, I just hate it because it hurts our local folks more than it does anybody else. But again, it's, it is the law. And when, when property values are jumping like they, they are, but we have to do what we got to do, so. Anyway, just a bad, bad situation to be in, or a good one, depending on which side you're on.
Right. And it's important for people to realize too, because a lot of people think that those values will come from our office or from the commissioners. But these values are based on sales and then we include the characteristics of the home.
Commissioner, don't set the value. The appraisals does and the sales,
Right.
sales appraisals do. It's actually the, the property owners do.
Right.
From, from the demand that's out there.
Judy, what happens if, like if, that as high as these houses are selling right now? And all these apartments and all these condo stuff open up and, and the value starts going down? What, what happens then? Does the state step in then and do anything or?
They would if we, if we went above the ratio. Um, it, it goes both ways. If we fall below 90% or if we go above a certain percentage, we're required to do one.
That, how do they figure the ones on like, uh, say for example, these people that, that farmland all the time and stuff and that they know they're not going to sell it, you know, if, uh, does it still go by comparable properties around those people too?
It goes by market value, yeah. So even though, like, I'm not going to sell my property, you may not sell your property um, and have no intentions of it, but it's the market as a whole that resets. In that way, um, everyone is paying their fair share of tax.
Well, it's like Commissioner Rogers said, I guess it depends on what side of the ledger you're on. If you want to sell your property, you want to get top dollar for it. If you're buying, you want to, you know, buy cheap, but nobody likes paying taxes. I don't like paying taxes. But I pay them. Uh, but here's where it's important. I, I heard of a situation recently where a widow, widow woman who had no children wanted her estate to go to a children's hospital. And it was written up that way. And so, don't know how it all shake out, but, uh, the children's hospital was out of state. They wanted a quick dollar. Someone offered them tax card value for the place. The children's hospital took it and this lady was dead in the grave and I'm sure she'd roll over in the grave because her life's work and savings. She took foster children in, she cared for children, a great community member, and, uh, I'm sure she wanted top dollar to go to help children. And, uh, I feel like it, I don't, really don't know how it all shake out, but the, the property will probably, probably, uh, was way short. Procedures that went to the children's hospital was way short and probably what it should have been. Uh, I really don't know, but there's other cases like that. You have predatory buyers that, that these elderly people sometime are preyed, they're preyed upon. And, uh, you know, if it's their wish for that to go to cancer research or a children's hospital or orphanage, they worked their whole life and if the property's worth a million dollars, that's, that's what they would want to go to that entity. Uh, maybe not half of it. And so there, it's a two-edged sword. I, I feel like it, we have to help some of our people that, that fall in that category and, uh, depends on what side of the fence you're on, but, uh.
Right. And it's not just in Haywood County. There's 27 other counties out of 100 that is on the same revale cycle that we are. So their last reappraisal was in 2021 and out of those 27 counties, 18 of them got letters that they were going to have to do another revale.
Yeah.
It's sale, but where are you going to buy? Because you're going to have to pay premium value if you sell, you know, it's a tough situation. But have to do it.
I think Bryant was telling me, Bryant, didn't you tell me that there was some counties that had a, that were, that were not increasing in value across the state?
That, that was at the last revale. Uh, you know, we used Tanner valuation services and they had a couple other counties and, and some, some of the growth numbers we were seeing were, were, in those counties were 1 or 2% compared to, for us, like 24 or 32%, whatever that, that was. That's, that's a whole different set of demands when you're not getting a growth in your tax base, right?
Yes, it's a double-edged sword for our county because it's well locked.
Right.
Does anybody have anything? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, number two, item number two is an update on Haywood County flood print work by NC State University Coastal Dynamics Design Lab Assistant Research Professor Travis Klondike and University Faculty Scholar and Director Andy Fox.
Oh, is that on screen? Is that on the screen? Thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, my name is Travis Klondike. I serve as the Associate Director of the Coastal Dynamics Design Lab and I'm also an Assistant Research Professor at NC State University in the Department of Landscape Architecture and Environmental Planning. Project manager is probably easier to say. Uh, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide a status update on the Haywood County flood print effort. For a little bit of background context, just as a reminder, um, we are serving as the project lead through the Coastal Dynamics Design Lab at NC State. Some of our project partners associated with the grant that is funding the effort is the NC State University Bio and Ag Engineering Department specifically for hydraulic modeling scopes of work. And also contractually, uh, part of the project is Gresham Smith and Partners. Uh, they're a regional architecture and engineering firm to help with cost estimating. Um, the funder of the effort is INCOR, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency with the originating source of the funds um, through, uh, the US Department of HUD. Um, the project timeline began April of this year and will conclude in October of next year. Um, and our next milestone deliverable is a 50% report in January of 2024. Um, just to underscore, this effort, um, is not coming from, uh, any funding sources of a local origination source. So not from the county, not from local jurisdictions. It's coming from, uh, state and federal sources of funding. Uh, so flood print strategies, uh, there, there are four kind of guiding principles or strategies that we use to right fit these projects in the communities in which we conduct this type of study and analysis, uh, scoping, scaling, communicating and implementing. Um, the primary goal of our effort is to, is to propose different, uh, uh, landscape and architectural and engineering proposals that attract external grant funds towards building resilience focused projects in Haywood County. Um, so the primary deliverables that we will be, uh, providing at the end of the project period are more or less, uh, grant application material and collateral. So with that in mind, we scope projects with grant scorecards in mind. So everything from where projects are being located to who they are benefiting to what types of projects are being proposed. Uh, we scale these projects to be, um, a series of puzzle pieces that fit together typically. So two, three or four projects that can fit together um, to build match off one another toward a bigger vision. And then we, we strongly believe that we can, uh, create visual and, and text collateral that can be used as copy and paste material, uh, for these types of grant programs that we're talking about. Um, and then lastly, uh, implementing, uh, as desired, we, we can stay along to help administer and manage projects should funds be awarded. So where we are in the process, um, this is an example of process diagram from a recently completed flood print as part of the same funding cycle. Um, on the left, it starts from background and approach and then moves through inventory analysis, planning alternatives and a portfolio, project portfolio toward the end. Um, as you'll see in this diagram, that community engagement is woven throughout this entire cycle. And right now, we're in this middle phase. So moving out of inventory analysis and into developing planning alternatives and right at a critical pinch point in which community engagement, um, is, uh, most useful for, uh, moving out of, you know, inventory analysis and into what projects will actually be scoping and developing. Um, so as a preliminary vulnerability assessment, um, the reason why Haywood County is included as a, um, eligible community to be a part of the study is due to the impacts of tropical storm Fred. Um, specifically the zip code in the southeast portion of the counties would trigger that, um, the county to be eligible. Um, so we looked at the entire county at first and looked at, uh, vulnerable building clusters. So the number of buildings in which the first floor elevation would likely receive some level of damage from a 100 or 500-year flood event. And then also at critical facilities throughout the county. And then we subdivided these, uh, based on the sub watershed of each one. So there's four sub watersheds at this scale that are feeding, uh, the different water bodies in Haywood County. Um, what we noticed in, in looking at the overlap of critical facilities and vulnerable building clusters with the amount of rainfall from tropical storm Fred is that the, the sub watershed in the southeast portion of the county is indeed the, the portions that were likely receiving the most damages from tropical storm Fred. And there were high concentrations of vulnerable building clusters in this area. And so when we zoom into the, this particular southeast, uh, sub watershed, the, the quote unquote headwaters of the Pigeon River sub watershed, there were several building clusters that reemerged as for us to, um, zoom more into to develop potential projects uh, with Clyde and Canton being the ones that seemed, uh, to highlight most on the map in terms of areas of need um, in response to tropical storm Fred. So looking at Canton, we've conducted preliminary analysis that look at the overlap, again, of first floor elevations of buildings within the floodplain and, um, expected damages that could be received from said flood events on those buildings. And we've done the same for Clyde. Um, so again, they've been looking at the overlap of, you know, which areas of the floodplain are most likely to receive or have received, uh, damages from, from these types of flood events. Um, and so where we have kind of arrived at in this kind of first, um, look of through inventory analysis is that we believe we can scope a, a range of two to four projects that can both serve the town of Canton and the town of Clyde. So these could be projects that range in, in terms of green or gray infrastructure. Uh, so anything from floodplain restoration to the elevation of select buildings, um, or even to roadway improvements. Um, but we think there's benefit to actually looking at the Pigeon River as the kind of connecting fabric between the two towns and viewing projects that are serving either location more locally as being part of a bigger vision, uh, knowing that projects in one area could potentially benefit the other and vice versa. And so we're looking at these both from, uh, floodplain hydrologic performance, but also through parks and greenway and, and economic development lenses as well. So a few things that are upcoming next is to be aware of, and then these will be, uh, made public in the next month or two in terms of, um, formal outreach and engagement efforts. Um, so again, our, our most acute focus is now kind of zeroing in on Canton and Clyde most specifically. Um, we anticipate to have multiple forms of public engagement in the, the December of this year and January of next year timeframe. We'll be taking feedback from these public engagement sessions and overlay, overlay that with what we'll call a, a grant funding project decision matrix. So what, what are community and resident stakeholders telling us are projects they would like to see further developed? And then how do those overlap with the funding priorities of grant programs that we might be able to help, uh, deliver collateral towards? And again, we're kind of targeting approximately three, uh, projects, you know, from a larger list of, let's say nine or 10 that we can further develop, uh, through preliminary analysis, benefit cost assessment of, um, and preliminary schematic designs and renderings and hydraulic model performance in order to arrive at, uh, projects that we believe, believe would be competitive in grant program cycles. Um, again, we'll have a 50% draft report at the end of January of next year. Um, and then after that report is delivered, the bulk of the remaining time on the grant program, so from January 2024 to October 2024 is where we're developing this grant program collateral. So taking these two, three, four projects and really seeing them through a level of, uh, finish and development that we believe will make them competitive at state and federal grant programs. Um, we've engaged in this exact same process now, um, in six other communities prior to Haywood County to date with, um, similar levels of success um, that we believe will attract lots of external grants and funding sources to these types of projects in Haywood County. Um, so what these next upcoming engagements will look like for the Canton and Clyde area, and this is the last slide. Two different concurrent formats. So for both downtown Canton and Clyde areas, um, sending out door hangers, mail flyers, et cetera. Uh, for property owners with commercial structures who would like to have, uh, their buildings assessed for, uh, the elevate, the potential for elevation and floodproofing. Um, again, this is not a guarantee of projects happening at the location, uh, but ways in which we've worked in other communities is uh, we're able to show the degree of elevation or floodproofing that would need to happen if it's even technically feasible on that particular property. And then if there's a concentration of folks that would like to have, um, that level of assessment and analysis complete, we can show before and after renderings to show what that would look like in section elevation and 3D view. And then we'll include that as part of a competitive grant program. Um, so those will be more on individual property owner basis, uh, for those. But then concurrently, we're, we're like, we're working with town of Canton leadership to host more of a public meeting and workshop setting uh, for the Park Street corridor and looking at potential solutions for nuisance flooding and economic development. Um, like roadway diet strengthening exercises, um, for the Park Street corridor that goes through downtown, uh, Canton. Um, and particularly the, what the visual is showing here is in settings like what we're describing for the public meeting and workshop that we generally will, will present an existing condition with multiple other scenarios. So like scenario A, scenario B. And we'll ask for people to literally like do pushpin voting on certain types of projects or priorities that they would like to see further developed. And that's what'll guide us moving forward. Um, but that's the end of the slideshow for tonight. Uh, again, this is more of a status update more than anything else, uh, but felt it important to provide an update at this time, uh, prior to upcoming public engagement events. Uh, but we're happy to take any questions at this time.
Could you give us some examples of what y'all have done in other communities?
Sure.
That, that helped those, just, you know?
Yeah. Uh, so a, a good example would be Pollocksville in Jones County. It's a community of about 300 people. Um, they have one main street and they are on the Trent River. Um, so we helped them through a similar process and we scoped four phases of projects in that particular example. Um, one was a, uh, constructed wetland and boardwalk project of the Riverfront Park. Um, that has actually been funded and constructed. We have the ribbon cutting on Thursday this week. Um, and that'll, uh, help, uh, resolve a lot of flooding that occurs on an annual basis in Pollocksville. It's right on the Trent River. Um, we have another, uh, project along their main street, uh, which is adding sidewalks and adding, uh, buyer retention along the right of way in Main Street. And that has been funded and is actually, uh, mobilizing and being staked out this week. Um, that'll be done. That'll be done by the end of the calendar year. We also helped them with a proposal to the FEMA BRIC program, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, and that was submitted as the elevation and floodproofing of seven commercial properties. So similar to the example I provided here, you know, that was working with individual property owners and the town to arrive at seven properties where folks had showed desire and interest to have their properties elevated, and we are helping them through that grant application process right now. That was selected for funding. We anticipate awards to be coming soon for that. But in that Pollocksville example, there are actually eight different funding sources that we helped them attract to fund those projects, and that's a combination of local nonprofits, state-level funds, and federal-level funds that kind of helped garner support for the plan. So in that case, the town of Pollocksville is committing $20,000 a match, but it's yielding over $2.26 million in grant funds.
Then, so you would, this would consider commercial properties that are owned by property owners?
Correct, but it, yeah, that level of analysis takes a property-by-property and structure-by-structure level of analysis, however.
So once you go over a piece of property like that, you can basically give ideas on how to floodproof it, or elevate it, or whatever they need to do to try to mitigate that as much as they can?
Correct, but again, I will stress that it does depend on the characteristics building by building. Not all buildings are suitable for that type of mitigation. But again, that's why we end up doing a lot of field work and going door by door to see where it might be suitable and where there's interest.
Pollocksville, of the seven or eight buildings that you elevated, how many buildings did you review before you married him?
So in that particular case, there were about two dozen, I would say, that we assessed with actually taking like floor-to-ceiling measurements and doing a more detailed like fieldwork assessment of. A larger scale would be Whiteville in that particular case, and that's in Columbus County. In that particular case, we assessed about 120 buildings and then provided detailed examples for about 11 or 12 that were most feasible. Depends how many days we can have on the ground and how much interest there is. Yeah.
What can you say are the characteristics of the winners, if you will?
Sure. Yeah.
And does your program fund those elevations?
No, we do not fund them. We do help with creating the grant application collateral to make it competitive for grant programs, or if it's the case where it's a declared disaster and there's already funds being dedicated for elevation or floodproofing, it kind of streamlines that process for those property owners. I'd say there's two types of elevation. I'd say there's like characteristics of like good kind of standard properties or buildings. If it's a, what I call a more standard elevation, that'd be a building that's not slab-on-grade. So typically, there's a small crawl space, you know, a few steps to get up to the first floor, and it's of a suitable structural condition to where it could be temporarily lifted on hydraulic jacks above the ground while a new foundation is built underneath. Those are more common for residential structures. In some places we work, there are structures like that along main streets, and so it's, you know, commercial property, but it looks like more of a residential building. What's a bit more atypical, but one that we do propose and have had success with in terms of like funding mechanisms, is for more commercial structures where it might be slab-on-grade, but the exterior shell is masonry or brick and is able to better withstand floodwaters of like one to three feet coming up. And so in that particular case, you can raise the actual first floor, like within the existing building shell, and have a few steps or ramps to get up from the entry up to the livable space, and then you have to abandon the amount of floor beneath. Usually that's suitable up to, I'll say, like three to four feet max of grade change. And so there's a lot of particular building conditions that it's only possible in. So if your floor-to-ceiling height is too low, then you can't raise your floor up three or four feet. You have to have enough head clearance height. Or if the building material isn't masonry, then it becomes more challenging to do that as well. But again, we do go building by building and take floor-to-ceiling measurements where there's some sort of interest from property owners to engage in that effort.
When would you be in Canton doing that?
Yeah, so we'll be starting to advertise in November and providing folks updates that, you know, we'll be coming. But what we found in the past is that we can do a really wide range of assessments, but if there's not some level of interest from the property owner, then it's not really the best use of our time to be providing like really detailed assessments for dozens and dozens of properties. So we'll be advertising starting in November, and then we anticipate doing a lot of field work in the November to January timeframe.
Do you do whole areas at one time? Do you say, like if you got a lot of people interested, you can do the whole area like?
Yeah, I mean, that's an ideal scenario. If there's like an entire half of a block that is showing interest, then that's like a best-case scenario for us. What I anticipate will likely happen is that there'll be enough interest both in Canton and in Clyde for us to have separate future meetings with those interested property owners to see if what we're proposing is feasible for their needs, and then we'll walk through what a competitive grant program application might look like.
Item number three is the update by North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency for the Haywood County Affordable Housing Development Fund Endowment Payment Assistance Program. The Community Development Director of the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, Tracy Cloriz. Hey, Tracy.
Hi, hello, everybody. It's great to be back with you today, and I really appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on where we are with the HUD Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds that were awarded to North Carolina specifically for long-term recovery from the effects of Tropical Storm Fred. The last time that I was in front of you, we talked about wanting to plan use of additional funds that had been awarded by the federal government, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. And also, I'm very excited to tell you about some planned next steps that are just around the corner. There we go. So the original agreement that we executed, the state executed with Haywood County, provided for $7 million of programmable funds, and we needed all the work to be done by December of 2027. At the same day that you authorized the county to execute that agreement with us, HUD announced they were giving us more money specifically for Tropical Storm Fred recovery, and that comes to $4.6 million in additional funds available for programming. And because they awarded it September 30th, or in September of this year, that means that there's another nine months that we have to make sure that we are able to get all the funds expended. And so we don't think we're going to need that extra time, but it's nice to have it. The next thing I wanted to show you, just as a recap, the milestones that we have reached so far with these grant funds. Everyone's aware of the federal disaster declaration in September of '21, and it was eight months later that HUD announced that they would be awarding funds to North Carolina for Tropical Storm Fred recovery. By August the 22nd, we were here for the public meeting to talk about these funds and how that could be used. And then in November of that year, we received the grant agreement from HUD, which we were able to work with the county between then and January to draft up the sub-recipient agreement, which is the form of contract between the state and the county for deploying those dollars. And the day that we came for you guys to sign that, like I said, HUD announced that they were going to give some more money. So between January of this year and April, we worked with the county to expand the plans for spending those additional dollars. And then in May, the county executed the agreement with the CDDL folks for the floodprint work that Travis was just telling you about, which we were able to fund with, whenever HUD makes an award of disaster recovery dollars, they set aside a certain portion for planning. And it's those planning dollars that are funding the work that Travis is talking about, and you heard him mention Whiteville, and that's another floodprint project that we funded with the grant dollars that were awarded for the eastern part of the state for Hurricane Florence recovery. So you executed that in May, and we're excited to see the results of that work. And then in September of this year, HUD delivered that revised grant agreement to us, to the state, which provided for the additional money. And so that was September, and here it is October. We're here to basically ask for that amended sub-recipient agreement to be executed. And assuming that we have that executed by the county, we are ready to launch the first program tomorrow. The first program is the Affordable Housing Program, and a lot of people like to call this workforce housing instead of affordable housing. So it's called affordable housing because it has the buzzwords in there, but when you see the project list itself, it does reflect what the county has told us that they would like to do. It will have both home ownership and rental housing as options for any applicants that want to apply. There will be a competitive application process, but plenty of technical support and assistance so that any interested applicants can get all the information they need to put together a strong proposal for getting some of these dollars for housing in Haywood County. Haywood County has an evaluation panel that will be reviewing all the applications that are submitted and making their recommended selections, which will then come to this board, we're hoping in July, for you to approve those recommendations and make the final determinations on what projects get funded. And that is $10.5 million that would be awarded in that fashion. We have a proposed timetable for this program. I mentioned we would like to launch this tomorrow. We have a press release that will announce that these funds are available, and at the same time, there will be a link on Haywood County's website that will go directly to the webpages that we will host on our site that are already developed, that are labeled Haywood County Affordable Housing Development Program. And it has all the information that prospective applicants would need with the program manual, with how you actually get money paid out under the grant, and how the whole process of how you apply for the funds is all going to be laid out there. At the same time, we have already had conversations, we've had meetings with USDA, because as you may know, they have some of the least expensive mortgage money that's available, and they also have infrastructure money for housing projects, and they would like to partner with Haywood County and make sure that any prospective applicants know about how to apply for their funds as well. And so we will be working with them and with nonprofits that are active in this area like Dogwood Health Trust, because if there are projects that can leverage additional funding sources, then that will allow Haywood County's money to stretch further and fund more projects. We are going to announce, assuming that we are able to announce tomorrow, we will also announce that the first information session will be available. It's a virtual meeting on the 1st of November, where we will have program experts and representatives from USDA also present on that to just talk about the grant, talk about the kinds of projects that can get funded, and how the process will work. And then if you can't make that meeting, of course, it'll be recorded, and if somebody clicks on the link on Haywood County's website, it'll go straight to where they can get those materials. They can watch the whole recorded session, they can get any of the PowerPoints that are used, so they don't have to be, you know, physically on their computer on the 1st of November to get all that information. And then we have plans for a second information if the county thinks that it's warranted in December, which is, you know, frankly, not the best time to be trying to get folks' eyeballs on a computer. But again, if there is a second one, it'll be recorded, the materials will be available for everybody, too. And then in January, our plan is to have another session that will talk specifically about how you put together a competitive proposal. And this is again, if the county asks us to do that, with the goal of having letters of interest turned in by 5:00 on the 1st of March, which is a Friday. And that letter of interest will allow the county with our support to ensure that the request is eligible for funding. Like, this is housing development, so if somebody wanted to do a housing project in Jackson County, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't even give them an application to put in. So the letters of interest allow us to make sure that the parameters that the county has laid out, like the property has to be in Haywood County, that those are adhered to before we open up applications to anyone who's interested. Then after the letters of interest are turned in later that month of March, we will have a training session on how you put together a good application and what needs to be in any proposal that you have. Then May, applications would be due, and that's six months out in the future, because we researched it with local experts, and they said, if I heard about this money being available tomorrow, and I didn't already have something in the works, given the challenges of finding buildable sites in Haywood County, it might take me six months to put together a viable proposal. And so we didn't want to set the deadline for proposals before what somebody might be able to, might need in order to be able to put together a competitive proposal. So that's why that has extended into May. And then with, once the applications are turned in at the beginning of May, then the evaluation panel will get right to work. And we've already had a training session with them to talk about, you know, things like confidentiality and making sure that the process is completely transparent and that there's a level playing field for anybody who might be applying for these dollars, and we will continue to be there to support their efforts going forward. And then in July, like I said, the plan is to have the recommendations come to this board in July for your meeting in the middle of the month, so that you can give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on what that evaluation panel is recommending. And then and only then would awards be announced. So that's the program that we are hoping to launch tomorrow. The second program is the Down Payment Assistance Program, which we call Home Ownership Assistance Program. And we've talked about this before, there's $1 million available to offer to first-time homebuyers in the county who are buying in the county. And if those first-time homebuyers are displaced by Tropical Storm Fred, or first-generation homebuyers, meaning they don't own a home and their parents don't own a home, if they are first responders or local government staff, then they can get up to $30,000 plus additional five points in closing costs for their mortgage. Other first-time homebuyers can get up to $20,000 plus 5% for closing cost, and it's a recognition of the kinds of numbers that you were seeing earlier about how property values have gone up so high. Without some assistance, it's hard for folks who are first-timers to get onto the property ladder and be able to grow through being property owners, be able to grow their wealth. So we're hoping to help with that. And the way that this program is set up, there is no repayment of those funds required as long as the recipient stays in the home as their primary residence for at least five years. Otherwise, they would return the funds to the county, and the county would loan those dollars back out to another first-time homebuyer. And this is the program that goes up to 120% of area median income, and the 80% of it will go to folks that, or excuse me, 70% of it, so $700,000 will go to households that are making at or below 80% of area median income, which is about $60,000 in Haywood County for a family of four. And then the remaining 30% can go to families that are making 120% of that. There is homebuyer education, pre-purchase homebuyer education required, just so that, you know, if you don't have experience being a homeowner, we don't want you to get in trouble with not realizing how to budget for things like a new roof or a new water heater. And so we do this homebuyer education, but it can be done virtually in the comfort of your own home at your own pace, and that is all paid for in the grant. And there's no charge for any additional housing counseling that any applicant might need for that to make sure that they- need for that, to make sure that they get started on the right foot when they get into their home. And for that program, that is going to be administered by the county as well. And we are hoping to launch that in April of 2024, just in time for the spring selling season for folks that might be looking for homes. And that's all I had tonight.
A lot.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions on that? We really appreciate the extra $4 million. I mean, the seven was great, so we're a little over 11 million now for that. And we desperately need housing for our workforce. And it's just getting, actually, it's getting worse. It's just like when Judy was giving our example from our cost of homes, and interest rates have gone up quite a bit. And it's just hard for people to be able to get a home right now. So this will really help those families to be able to have homeownership. I think everybody ought to have that. I'd like to see everybody have it. So I'm glad that y'all step forward with this. And I will say, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency has really helped our county through all Tropical Storm Fred. And we appreciate all that y'all have done. And I think all the commissioners would concur with that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Thanks, Tracy. Thanks for coming up. Our next item, number four, is the update on Tropical Storm Fred mitigation and buyout program and Tropical Storm Fred mitigation point of contact, Cody Grassi, and North Carolina Emergency Management Assistant Director for Hazard Mitigation and State Hazard Mitigation Officer Steve McGugan. How are you tonight?
Good, good. Thank you, Commissioner. Just real quick, to brief out the board from the county's perspective, we received during the mitigation process, 58 applications for mitigation. And that included acquisition, that included elevation, and that included reconstruction. Of those, we had 40 applications that were for acquisition, and the rest were for something else, like I said, elevation or reconstruction. And we worked with those folks because of the limited funding to transition them to OSBM. And we were able to submit the other 40 applications on to the state of North Carolina. There was one application that did not meet the definition that was submitted to us of what the program was intended for. And so at the county level, we had to decline it. And that's because it was a different situation than flooding, and I think it was just a misinterpretation of what the intent was. So we declined that one application. But following your intent and the towns of Canton and Clyde's intent, we processed all applications that were provided to us and worked with those applicants to solidify their application or to seek other avenues. One other note, of the 18, we had two unknowns, and that means that we're not really sure. We exhausted every effort to make contact with them, and we weren't able to actually work with them to develop their application. But we exhausted mail, phone, visits, trying to work with them. But we, on the county level, attempted to solidify as many applications as we could and move those on to the state. At this time, I'd like to introduce Steve McGugan, the State Hazard Mitigation Officer, State of North Carolina, to provide an update for hazard mitigation for those that we've submitted on.
Good evening to commissioners. Steve McGugan, North Carolina Emergency Management. I do run the Hazard Mitigation Office, Hazard Mitigation Office for North Carolina. Deals both with the FEMA funds to do the programs, which you've heard about already, the BRIC, and flood mitigation assistance. Those are two non-disaster programs. And then the disaster program, which Cody just talked about, with the applications that we have in for Haywood County under two different disasters, 4588 for Tropical Storm Etta, as well as 4617 Tropical Storm Fred, which affected this area. Current status for those that were put in, we have 32 resident applications pending at FEMA currently. Again, 19 in 4588 Tropical Storm Etta. And then we also have 15 pending currently, right now, with Tropical Storm Fred at 4617. Based upon discussions this afternoon with Cody, I understand that one of those has already sold. The homeowner basically sold to another homeowner, so that one won't come out. The rest are pending review at FEMA. A little bit about how applications are developed and sent forward to FEMA. Again, our staff works with your staff, Cody, in this case, to receive all those applications, evaluate those applications. Evaluation means that we have to sit there and look at the tax card, we have to look at the application itself, and then we have to try to make sure that we can put it in and achieve a benefit cost analysis ratio of one. Based upon those, we also have a rubric that we have to go through based upon what the director and the Secretary of Department of Public Safety has set forward. First thing that we have to do is put in residences across the state. And then after we do residences, then we can move to other types of applications. I know the businesses has been talked about, we look at businesses. We also have other priorities of different events. So first, we try to acquire or elevate all homeowners that lived in the area that's impacted. Once we pass that, then we also look at other priorities for the areas of impact. And then we move outside the areas of impact and we look at other residences that are frustrated or have not been able to get into previous events. Once we exhaust all that, then we move down the list to next things. For this storm, again, we have multiple areas helped in the state, Haywood County being one of them, but there's also other residences that have been picked up across the state. Total value of the storm was a little over $10 million. We submitted $12 million worth of applications across the state. Again, some of those may fall out, just like just saying a residence just went out here. We give and take as we go down through that to try to get as many homes across the state taken care of. Once we submit our application to FEMA, the process, once it gets to FEMA, is it goes through another set of reviews up there. First review is always for programmatic. Again, that's where they review the administrative information as well as what we submitted to them. Then it has to go through a technical review, that's where they review the BCA to make sure all the applications that we submit up meet the BCA that's required for FEMA. And then finally, it goes through an environmental historical preservation review. That's currently where the application for Haywood for both 4588 and 4617 is sitting right now. What does an EHP review consist of? It looks at two things. It looks at the State Historic Preservation Office. They review it based upon homes that are in there and the areas that the homes are in. If there's any historical implication, then we have to do historical preservation measures. I can tell you that right now, based on 4617 application, there is one home that will have a historic preservation mitigation measure that we will have to take. That'll be part of the contract when we do that. There's also a tribal review. The tribal review is also for the same thing. They look at for anthropology. If it's in an area that may have implication from the tribes, then the tribes may impose a mitigation measure where we will have to provide an anthropologist during the demolition to make sure if anything is found during the disturbance of tearing up the old foundation or any of that, restoring the grounds, that we then stop and pause and do at least documentation. And if actual remains or some other historical artifact are found, then it has to be documented. Once those reviews are done, right now, where we stand is we expect those reviews to be completed late fall. That is what FEMA is telling us right now, late fall of 2023. So we would expect that to happen somewhere either mid to late November. Never good at giving a national timeline because again, between now and then, something else could happen and the review could be slowed down at FEMA. But if that was the case, again, late fall 2023, our intent that we would get that award letter, again, somewhere at the end of November. Once we get to, and let me stop and say that, even though they say late fall of 2023, one other thing they have to remember is for every application that's over a million dollars, it has to go to Congress to be reviewed. It has to go do what's called a legislation notification, large project notification. And that takes an extra 15 days on a review period. So even if FEMA completes their review late October or mid-November, it's going to go into a legislative review. That will again pause it. Again, it could take 15 days. If it goes over the Thanksgiving holiday, that could stretch it out a little bit further. But anyway, as soon as we get that, y'all have elected to go for the state-centric method of completing the project, which means that our office will complete the actual work for you. So as soon as we receive that award notification, we will get that out to contract, get the contract led on that. We already have pre-qualified contractors. It will go to them, they will all get to bid on it. One of the things that was asked about earlier, to make sure we covered, is that understand that the contractors are prime contractors across, but their requirement is whenever they go into an area like this, they have to have 50% of their subs come from the local area. So that means that whether it's the appraiser, whether it's the closing attorney, whether it's the surveyor, or even the demo, all that has to come from the local area. So they have a 50% requirement to come out of the local area. Those contracts have to be out for 30 days for bid. Once the bids come back in, we normally have an award period, it takes 15 days. Once we get the award out, anywhere between 60 and 90 days after award, work will begin. What does work beginning mean? Work beginning means that the contractors will start working with the homeowners to do what's called intake. They want to make sure they look over if the homeowners got any type of insurance during the actual event when it occurred, that then homeowners have their receipts for that. If they don't have their receipts, that could minimize or reduce what their actual offer price is when we go to do the offer for the acquisition. They help them do all that. They also will do the title search. And of course, they will also get under contract for them, whoever's doing the survey and appraisals in this area, as well as the closing. Once that process begins, the timeline on there becomes the local timeline. Again, we can normally do the appraisals and the surveys within 60 days, because again, the contractors normally get a surveyor and they do all the properties in one start, you know, start to finish. Same for the appraisals. Once we start making offers to homeowners, they have 45 days on their piece to be able to decide if they want to accept that offer or not. If the homeowner does not want to take the offer, either they turn it down or they think it's too low. If they turn it down, then that's the end of the program for them, we'll withdraw them from the program. If they think the offer's too low, the homeowner can pay for a second appraisal. That's their cost, and the cost comes back. Once they bring that appraisal back, we'll look over that appraisal. If it's within 15% tolerance, FEMA's rules are we can accept it. If it's over 15% tolerance, meaning that their appraisal came back 15% over what the appraisal is that we did on the first appraisal, then they can either go back and take the first appraisal, or the state will pay for a third appraisal. Okay? So that's not using FEMA dollars, that's using the state. The state will pay for a third appraisal. The third appraisal is then done, and then the average of three appraisals is put together. That's the final offer. So that's how it goes for the homeowner. So we try to work with each homeowner as best we can to get them the most they can for their buck, but understand, again, it's based on that. So once they accept the offer, again, that's a 45 day for them to accept, they can set the closing date. If the homeowner has not moved out of the home and still need time to find a home, we can give them up to 120 days is what we normally do if they need to find a home. If they've already found a home and they're ready to close, we'll go as fast as we can for the closing agent and for the state to pay the check. So basically, what happens is the closing attorney will then prepare the paperwork. We ask for a 60-day payoff, so it's a one-time call and one-time fee to the closing deal to get the payoff. We get the payoff with all the taxes, it's sent to our office, we then take it over to finance, and we cut a check directly to the closing attorney, so then the closing attorney can go. It takes about 15 days to make that turn. So again, we ask for 60, we try to go in 15, we'll meet in the middle somewhere. And then once it's closed out, the house is demolished. And then at the closing, what we talked about earlier, we do have a county rep that normally helps us in this process. Again, we assume it'll stay Cody. But Cody would be at those closings to be able to pick up basically the title for the county and bring it back and say that the county's closed. So that's all that happens. And once we finish the properties, then we, again, y'all would be the owner, the county would be owner of those 33 properties, and we would move on. So the only other thing to cover out of that is the other thing that is provided to the homeowners is the SARF program. The SARF program is a state acquisition relief fund. Basically, that provides up to 50K to each homeowner that the state gives on top of what FEMA and the state are paying for the acquisition of the home. So how does it work? So if, I always use $100,000, make it easy. So if we go in, it's $100,000 that we're purchasing the home for. And let's say for the homeowner to go into a new home, it's 130K. Then the state can pay that 30K so that basically between the $100,000 at closing and the 30K, they should have basically enough to go into a new home. Again, the state pays up to 50K. So if it was 100K at closing and it's 60K, 160K to get a new home, then the state would cap at 50K and really the homeowner would be left with a $10,000 finance or whatever they want to do on the new home. The other thing that the state also provides is up to $5,000 in moving costs. That's based on the HUD schedule for the number of rooms that the home has, and that's livable rooms. So if it's a three-bedroom, got a kitchen, got a dining room, got a den, then that would be six rooms that we would provide funds for, for them to be able to move. So they get the relocation cost, plus they get the additional funds between, again, cost to move into a new home that's not in the flood zone within the county. If they have already moved, then we would take the house price that they already have bought a new home for and then do the same thing. So if they bought the new home for 125 and they're moving out of 100K, and that's what they're getting at closing, then they would get 125K. If it helps pay off the loan that they took out on that home, that's great and wonderful. That's the purpose of the program. That pretty much covers the whole acquisition and what's about to happen, or any questions I can answer for any of y'all.
You talked about priorities. Who sets those priorities?
Those priorities are set by, basically, our office. We nominate it up to the Director of North Carolina Emergency Management, and then he signs off when we do the admin letter for each of the events that happen. So for each event, we have to set a rubric that ends up going up with our application to FEMA. It's signed off by the Director, and then it goes in with our admin plan to FEMA. And again, that's how they evaluate, the programmatic evaluation of our applications when they come forward, to make sure we met the programmatic allocation.
How many applications did you receive? Do you think, just roughly? I was just curious.
Again, Cody went over y'all of roughly 40 that went in. My frustrated list is a little over 4,000 houses. Let me put it that way. It's 4,000 properties right now that we haven't been able to help across the state yet. For this event alone, and let me say, 4,000 homes right now would be a little over $400 million is what I would need in this program to be able to do all of those homes. In this application, we had $10 million and we're helping a little over 82 properties, as well as some generators for critical facilities. So that's what went in in this application.
Haywood County or for the whole state?
That's for the whole state. So the hard part to understand about this program is that the non-disasters are more specific. So you heard about the building resilient infrastructure in communities. That's through my office as well. Those are more area projects that can do some, so like if I'm trying to help an area for what was talked about earlier. for what was talked about earlier, you can focus on that. And there's some other pieces that go in, and it ties into the overall resilient infrastructure. Then we have non-disaster, the flood mitigation assistance, that is focused specifically on properties that are dependent on the NFIP, and relieving the burden on the National Flood Insurance Program. They have to be severe losses or repetitively flooded, and there's a definition that goes with each, based upon the amount and the amount of cost to the home, as well as how many times it has been done. We work with those, and then the disaster program, again, is a statewide program. The state gets to, to funnel those dollars in, in the disaster. A non-disaster is competitively competed at FEMA's level. And FEMA, all we do is the state is nominate them up, and we can throw a whole bunch up there, you don't know what you're going to get back. So last year, we nominated 169 million in projects for BRIC, and we got back a little over 50 million. So there, each program operates differently, and each program has different rules.
This one, you, you could have used 400 million, and you got 10.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, the, the bad thing with the disasters is, is again, you hate to have disasters, but we get a little more control of the funding as long as we are, again, staying within the priorities between the secretary and the director and what he wants picked up in order.
Probably the same thing, yeah.
That was Steve, but thank you for coming earlier. I know that we spent almost a couple hours with you before the meeting, asking a ton of questions, but I actually just got a text message sitting here in the meeting about a constituent that was asking if their home was destroyed. This is one of the applicants during the home. Can, do you mind explaining that? I know it goes back, it reverts back to the day before the flood, if you don't mind to speak to that.
So the act, so just so everybody, it's probably a great thing you brought that up, because for what just happened with your tax assessor, I want to be clear that the, the offer that the homeowners are going to get are going to be the value of the home the day before the storm. It won't be today's value. So if you see your neighbor's house selling for $400,000 a day, and two years ago, your home was worth 130,000, it's going to be 130,000. It wouldn't be the cost increase. So that's the first piece. The other piece, can you repeat that, please, to the, what?
No, the, the constituent was just concerned their home was destroyed.
If the home was destroyed.
And it's, it's no longer there. It's not been demolished and hauled off. Again, their value would be based on the day before the flood.
Their value is based on the day before? The only thing that concerns me, and what you just said, and make sure I'm hearing it, did they, they demolish it themselves, or it was demolished during the storm?
Storm, actually.
Okay.
Probably set it in the middle of the road, and then they had to move it.
So if, if, if it was destroyed during the middle of the storm, I can still acquire that. Please understand, the acquisition program requires that the home be there. We're buying the home.
Thinking when you're talking about the State Department of Transportation came in and made toothpicks out of it, right?
No, that's another one.
That's another one you're talking about.
There's one sitting in the middle of the road, and the State Department of Transportation had to open the roadway up, so they just demolished it.
But, but again, if it was removed, if it came off its foundation based on the water, I can still acquire that lot. If they came in and demolished it themselves before being approved, I just hit a different wall, and I wouldn't need to know what you're talking about. It changes the rules of the program.
And I guess another question, or maybe just to clear this up, I know that we spoke about this earlier as well, but I think the understanding after the meeting we had at Haywood Community College was that the commissioners were the ones that would make the decision on whether or not there would be a buyout through this mitigation process. If you don't mind, just clarify that we had nothing to do with that, so.
No, well, okay, so there is two things. First off, y'all have to approve the program happening.
Sure.
Okay? So y'all, y'all just approve the program happening. The other issue was, before we did state-centric, you as the commodity of the commissioners would have had to do it. I didn't have state-centric approve when we came up here for that meeting. So in previous, when the county had to execute the program, you would have to approve it because you're spending the money as the county, and then come back to the state to get the reimbursements because we hold the funds from the federal government. Now, under the state-centric program, we've taken all that so that y'all don't have to deal with it. I'm taking that on as the state, and so since the state already provides the match, what we do now is go ahead and pay the full amount. So we're, we're kind of working the sort of the State Emergency Response and Disaster Fund. We're working the sort of to pay the full amount for the house, so we still meet the requirements of FEMA being a reimbursable program. The state pays 100%, and then gets the 75% reimbursement from the thing. So to that point, y'all don't have to approve, other than saying you want to participate in the program, but you don't approve any of the funds or anything being expended because we do that for you.
I appreciate you clearing that up, and I guess you may have mentioned this earlier, I may have missed it, but on the, the buyouts that, that we currently have with the 32 applicants, I know you mentioned the closing cost, but if you don't mind, talk about the tax part of it, too. You may have mentioned that, but you know, once, once there's an agreement, what's left in a year, you will pay.
Well, it'll be a standard, standard purchase agreement, just like if somebody else came in and purchased your home. The, the state will pick up a part of, the majority of the closing cost. The only closing cost, so again, let's say we're at $100,000. So I buy, we made the offer for $100,000. Then there's going to be the closing costs that go in there. There's the, there's the DOT rec fee. There's so much of the, the title fee and the deed recording, all that goes in. And then the last thing that's always calculated is the taxes. So you're going to have the taxes that are from the day of closing until the end of the year, the, the buyer pays those. And then there's going to be the taxes from the day we're closing back to the start of the year. That's the homeowner's tax. So when you calculate it all out, again, if, if, if you have a $100,000 home, and you have it paid off, then it'd be 100,000 minus the taxes for the day of closing back to the first of the year, the rest of that would become yours, plus if you have any SARF that you are able to get, plus the moving cost. So that would be what you walk away from the table with. If, again, we talked about DOB, just to make sure, again, if you took an insurance payout, let's say you got a $100,000 home, you took an insurance payout of $20,000, and you paid off your mortgage, that's not what the insurance is supposed to be for. The insurance is supposed to be the repair of your home. That just became what's called a duplication of benefits. FEMA cannot duplicate the same benefits that your insurance would have paid out. So now, instead of 100,000, we'd be starting at 80,000, because I have to take off that $20,000 that you didn't use to repair your home. Okay? If you used it to repair your home, biggest thing is, as long as we got some receipts, we can show receipts, you can go run to the bank and show that you paid, you know, 15,000 at Lowe's to buy your lumber, or you paid a contractor $15,000 to clean it up, we're good. I just got to have something that shows that you used that $20,000 to, to pay your home, and then we stay at the offer price. But again, the offer price is reduced based on any DOB, and to your point, sir, at the closing, the, basically, the only thing that the homeowner's going to have coming out on the HUD one is the taxes from the start of the year to the day of closing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess now for the toughest part of it, which is the commercial side, as I told you earlier, I'm real passionate about small businesses or the commercial side of it, because I own a small business myself, and if I'd got flooded out, I'd probably be expecting some help as well. So if you don't mind to touch on that, I know we got a pot of money. At the end of the day, we don't have enough money, residents come first, but if you don't mind to speak to that as well.
Yes, sir. So again, when you look at all the applications that go across, we have to maintain the rubric that we, that we develop, and that of course, the director signed off on. The rubric, the way it looks, works across, again, the, across the state is, is the first is homeowners, property owners, residents that are living in the disaster area. That's the first priority that goes down. The next one becomes residents that are outside the declared counties, because you may have three declared counties or five declared counties, but in the same event, I may have others that got hit during that event. So again, it may not be those exact declared counties, but then, then the third priority is residents across the state. Then after we do residents across the state, if there's any funds still available, then we, then we start all over again, and then we start down through the commercial businesses. That's where, again, we would go into what's in the area that's been damaged or declared, excuse me, then the areas that have been damaged by the same event, then general across the state. Hazard mitigation funds are broken down into three pots. The first is 88% goes to homeowner projects, if you will, this type of what we just talked about. Then I have 5% that goes to plans, and then I have 5% or, excuse me, 7% that goes to plans, and then 5% that goes to basically the non-calculable needs that doesn't require BCA. That's normally where we put our generators and stuff that goes to emergency operation facilities and critical facilities. So that's where the generator projects go. If I don't have any plans to do, I can take 7% and move it into the projects and get 95% for projects. Again, in this storm being a roughly 8 million, 8.9 million dollar storm, I didn't have a whole lot of capacity. Again, homes eat it up really quick. There's two things that you look at when you look at the homes. The first is the FEMA waiverable amount. So FEMA has a set cost that they will pay for the acquisition of any property, period. I don't care whether it's residential or commercial, it's just the acquisition cost. That's $323,000. If you're greater than $323,000, we have to try to do what's called a manual BCA. If you're under $323,000, then you fit in a waiverable amount. Most homes will fit in the 323, so that's another reason that you do homes first, because you're trying to eat up as much money as you can and get homeowners help. Once we complete, again, going through what we have in terms of homeowners, then we will turn to others. Again, in this case, 8.9 million dollars, we were out of funds pretty quickly. I, I will tell you that we had a total of three acquisition projects, one elevation project, and two generator projects in this event. That's all we did, and that ate up the full 8.9 million dollars.
Is there any other funds that you're aware of? I know I asked this earlier as well, but just trying to make it for the public here as well. Any other funds that's available that these folks could go to to get some help? Is, is the first question. I guess the second question is part of what you said earlier, talking about the, what the business is worth versus what the actual property value. Is there an option there of just selling just the property? Maybe not necessarily the business. As I mentioned, we've had one business I know of that moved locations, so speak to that, too.
Sure, okay. So in terms of other applications, right now, there are no other funds that I know of to be able to use. Again, from a mitigation standpoint, as I said, I've got, I get to use disaster funds statewide. We haven't had a disaster, knock on wood, since basically COVID was our last disaster that we've been dealing with. Really Tropical Storm Fred was the last one that we've had as a state. So September of '21, or August of '21, was the last declared federal disaster we've had. So at this point, we don't have any other funds, at least for mitigation. I would look, not putting INCOR on the spot, but that's the only other funds that I know that are out there. There are no other state-approved projects, and I think Tracy's doing all she can from the INCOR side of the house based on funds that INCOR has. INCORS are also targeted to certain areas. She's still here, she leave? Yes, DR's done, right? All the DR funds are done? Yeah, so there's not much left in the way of disaster funds to be used anywhere else in the state. The only thing really left is, is if, again, in the next short session, you were able, through your representatives, to be able to put an earmark in, into the budget. That's really the only way. And then that would go through long-term recovery and Joe Stanton, not to put Joe on the short, but that, that's it. In terms of, second half of your question, I can off on that?
Is the possibility of a buyout just for the property value?
Okay, so while that would be a lot less expensive, and it makes it easier on the BCA calculation, unfortunately FEMA will not allow that because federal rules will not allow that. That's not really our choice. Again, as I would say, I could do things a lot quicker, and it would make it a lot easier if we just did it, but unfortunately, when you go into commercial, we have to look at future of the business and all that, and it all follows the federal rules. Again, everything we do here does follow the federal rules and federal guidelines of OMB.
Well, I might not should say this, but I did talk to Representative Pless before the meeting, and we are working on that other part of that. So trying to, trying to help all the small businesses all we can, so.
Understands, sir.
We are working on that. I guess the last question, I think it might be my last one, and I'll let these other commissioners ask some questions if they want, but I know that we brought this up earlier, but we know probably a year ago that this decision was made, and like I'd said earlier, I, I didn't find out till probably about a week ago, and I asked you point-blank in the meeting, do you mind to tell me what you?
Well, I don't mind telling you. Again, I have to take the responsibility for that. I, I felt the person that I have that normally handles those things put the email out and, and sent a letter and notified each of the sub-receipients or sub-applicants at that point, until you become a sub-recipient once the award's made. The sub-applicants, the final list, and they failed to do that, so I, it's my responsibility to not, to sit there and look them in the eye and say, "Did you send the letter?" But normally, our job is, is once we submit the application, once the application is signed by the sub-applicant, we then follow up with a final, here's the final property list, because again, you sign the sub-application, you need a copy of that list. That didn't happen, so that's my fault more than anything, but that's the way the normal process goes.
I appreciate the ownership of that. I, it just, again, it was frustrating on my end.
I totally understand, sir.
Totally understand where a lot of our constituents are coming from, and own businesses that could have possibly sold that business, or got a better interest rate, or whatever it was. So I do appreciate the ownership of the question. I guess that is all.
So.
Some of these other commissioners talk.
If you, if we have another disaster, and I'm certainly not hoping that that happens, would these outstanding six properties have any sort of, I don't know, preferred placement in the program? Would they, because they're kind of pending, or do they fall to the bottom of the barrel again?
The only priority I can sit here and guarantee you is, is those that are impacted. Those are my first priority always, is to get the, the homes, the homes that have been impacted in the impact zone. And then I try to get everything else in as I can going down based upon funding. I can't sit here and say anybody else has got, because I can tell you, I've got things on the other side of the state that's been impacted by tropical storms and hurricanes that are still on the list, so.
Were there only six, six, I think, were there only six applications that were commercial properties?
That I know of? Okay, that, I'm going to have to turn around, I would have to look and verify, but as far as I know, only six is what I was given. Now you get to bail me out.
There are seven total. We had six in that application, and then there was one that we had as another applicant. So seven total.
One was, one was funded, and the other six were not?
That's, that's something that we had discussed prior to the meeting, in that when we had submitted that on to the state, that one had been listed into the residential application. The state had asked us to split commercial and residential after we had combined the application, and so we had, as a county, notified the state that, that that one needed to be pulled off that list and put on to the commercial list. And, and we're working through that process now. I don't think that that had been pulled off.
Yeah, I, I am with Brandon that I appreciate you taking ownership of the, of the delay in notifying the folks, and I know that they're, Brandon and Tommy specifically have been very involved with Tropical Storm Fred because of their, you know, they've been there her whole lives and the proximity, of course, to the event, but when, you know, when, when, I guess residents are so concerned that they start reaching out even further, if there's anything we could do, it certainly would be beneficial. And I do appreciate you taking responsibility for that, and we're all human, and things like that happen. But it's, you know, we work very hard for economic development for our county to have good quality jobs, and I believe that some of these business, businesses employ several people, and, and I'm not trying to beat you up about this, but, you know, it would be, we have, we have million, we've talked about millions of dollars tonight, and so I just hope that we're doing our due diligence to dig, to see if there's something that these folks could apply for, because in a year's time... folks could apply for, because in a year's time, it's like you said, interest rates have, you know, maybe almost tripled, and, you know, there could maybe have been other opportunities had they known, so eyes open if there's some way that we can help these folks. It's beneficial not to just them as individuals, but our to community as well.
I really don't have a whole lot to say. Mr., Commissioner Rogers pretty much answered, or questioned all, brought up all the questions I was gonna bring up, but appreciate you coming all the way from Raleigh and know it was a long drive up here, and you met with us earlier for a couple hours and went through a whole lot of things. So Steve and Christine, thanks for coming, and also Tracy and Travis, the updates y'all gave and the hard work that you do, and I, I've said it before, you know, the state, state legislature, and I know there is still some work being done there, hopefully for some more funding, but they stood by us during this disaster, and, you know, all the money in the world can't bring back those six folks that lost their life that day. But through some of the funding that's come from the state, I think we're gonna have some better monitoring on the river, because I know this is not your purview, but we, we hopefully have some better weather stations and some better alarms to get people out of harm's way. And y'all have stood by us, all, all the folks from the state of North Carolina. I'm proud to be a Tar Heel. I'm proud to be from the state of North Carolina because I hear stories from other states and, you know, they're not good. And the state of North Carolina, you've come up big for our residents here in Haywood County, and I'm sorry for some that maybe have fell through the cracks. And I, I know the wheels of progress turn slow, and I know the government turns slow, but I said this at the last meeting, you know, on cleanup, we're twenty-six, twenty-seven months removed from this event, and we're just now starting to see stuff happen. And I can't fix that. I'm not happy about it, but I'm happy that there is some help coming, even though it is quite a ways down the road. But I know how all the, all the buttons have to be pushed and everything has to be in order, and if it weren't that way, there'd probably be a lot of fraud and a lot of things that wouldn't be good. But we appreciate y'all coming, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to tell you, we appreciate all the work you're doing helping our people, but if we happen to see anything come available or if our reps or something can get us some more, really appreciate the help for these businesses because they, they are real beneficial to our county, and anything we can do to help them, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And thank you again.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, next order of business is a discussion adjusting the agenda. I do not have any. Does anyone, other commissioners have anything? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. There are nine items. Does anyone have any questions on the nine items on the consent agenda?
I have one. On item number six, I should have asked Tracy this when she was up here. If we approve, the approval of the sub-sub recipient agreement, and when those projects are presented to us, we are not pleased that it would be fitting with the community, what happens to the funds?
You would then be able to reopen?
Come up, Kay. Yeah, you'll have to come up, Tracy, sorry.
Sorry, I should have asked you that when you were here before.
Sure. The board has the authority to approve or reject any of the recommendations from the evaluation panel, and you also, if you reject any projects, then those dollars could go into the down payment assistance program instead, or you could reopen the application period and solicit more proposals that are similar housing development rather than individual homeowner assistance. Those would be your options. The other option, which I wouldn't imagine that you would want to entertain, is to return the money to the federal government, which we, nobody wants.
That's never a good practice.
We don't want that.
Just going back to your presentation, it does say that those, affordable housing is, that could be rental property, not necessarily involved with homeownership. It could be multi, multifamily units.
Those proposals could be made, yes.
Gotcha, yeah, okay. So as long as we just have the ability to approve or disapprove?
In here and then I'll entertain a motion, we can approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item is to request consideration of an occupancy tax penalty waiver request from Lake Junealaska Assembly Incorporated for the month of July, 2023, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. We have our TDA Director Karina Ruffier here tonight. Did I do that right?
Ruffiere.
Ruffiere, okay.
Just Karina works.
Right. That'll be a long time before I get that, Karina. I'm sorry. But yeah, go ahead and explain what happened. I heard what happened, and it's kind of a, a, a bad.
Kind of a perfect storm of, yes.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I was trying to say.
So just, a brief background, in North Carolina, occupancy tax, most rules are at the state level. So North Carolina says occupancy tax must be paid on the twentieth of the month, on or before, of course, and if you don't pay it on time, we shall impose penalties and fees. So it's administered locally but governed at the state level, so it's a little unusual. That said, as the governing body, you have the pleasure of determining if those fees that the state requires we assess can get waived. A little more background, North Carolina also says occupancy tax is governed very similarly to sales and use tax. So there are sales and use tax penalty waiver, waiver guidelines that say, oh my gosh, you know, sometimes I pay my credit card late, right? If you haven't done it in a long time, they'll say, sure, we'll waive the penalty, but don't do it again. Very similar guidelines. So if you haven't paid it late in three years or more, it's automatically waived. This is at the state level for sales and use tax. If you have a family emergency, and that's the case that's in front of us today, medical emergency, rather, so Lake Junealaska has a team of three that pays their bills. Two of the three know how to calculate occupancy tax and remit it on time. One crushed her foot and was having reconstructive surgery. Obviously, nobody plans to do that. The second one's mother was terminally ill in Guatemala, so she flew to Guatemala to spend the last week of her mother's life with her in Guatemala. Both of those things happened at the same moment, they paid their bill late. So medical emergencies that seem justified based on the state guidelines for sales and use tax. Secondly, according to our records, they have never paid this tax late. So based on both of those scenarios, the Tourism Development Authority Board did unanimously vote to recommend that we go ahead and waive it for them at this time. That said, we're before you for the final decision.
So your board did agree to waive it?
Yes, sir.
Which we seated. For the most part, we seated those board members. Okay, they bring that recommendation.
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions? I entertain a motion, we approve item one for the regulations.
So moved.
Second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, Karina. Thanks for hanging around. And, you know, Lake Junealaska is a great partner, and I'm happy to, I can say that they pay their bills. I do work for them all the time, and they're very prompt on paying, so I'm sure it was a perfect storm.
They have guaranteed it will never happen again, but we'll see.
And they have put new measures in place to safeguard that, to make sure that, I mean, they, they really have done a, a lot of work to prevent this from ever happening.
Yes, thank you so much for your consideration.
Yeah, item number two is to request approval of a resolution honoring Sergeant Edmund Allen New, Jr. for thirty years of law enforcement service and awarding his issued badge and sidearm. Sheriff Bill Wilke. Sheriff, I was, I didn't know Eddie was retiring, dang it.
Yes, yes, he has.
I feel, I get, I'm feeling older.
Well, Eddie's done a great job over the last thirty years, and I'll read this resolution honoring Sergeant Edmund Allen New, Jr. for thirty years of law enforcement service and awarding his issued badge and sidearm. Whereas Sergeant New joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff in June nineteen ninety-four and held the rank of deputy sheriff, domestic violence deputy, and general crimes detective, SVU child abuse detective, and finished his career protecting students at Duscola High School as a school resource officer, all while serving within the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Sergeant New's service and dedication to the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, the citizens of Haywood County and his many accomplishments in the field of law enforcement during his thirty years of service to our community and the profession are hereby recognized and commended. And whereas North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty-seven point two provides that retiring deputies of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office may receive, at the sheriff's discretion, the issued sidearm of such retiring deputy at a price determined by the Board of Commissioners. And whereas Sergeant New has served as a member of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and is retired from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office effective one September two thousand and twenty-three, now therefore be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows. Sheriff William Bill Wilke is hereby authorized in accordance with provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty-seven point two to allow the transfer to Sergeant Edmund Allen New, Jr. the badge worn by him during his service with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Wilke is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty-seven point two to allow the transfer to Sergeant New his issued service sidearm, a Glock nine millimeter model forty-five, at the agreed price of zero dollars. Be it further resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Sergeant Edmund Allen New, Jr. for his dedicated years of service to Haywood County and its citizens, adopted the sixteenth day of October twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Tell Eddie that we appreciate it.
Yeah, I've known Sergeant New for quite some time, actually served alongside of him for several years and part-time, of course, and a great guy. Just like to say that I hope he enjoys his retirement and, and his family.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. You wanna make that as a motion?
I would, that'll be in a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, then item number three is to request approval of a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Our Director of Veterans Services, Stephen Alred, couldn't be here tonight. I'm gonna have Tommy read that resolution. Go ahead, Tommy.
Supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Haywood County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Haywood County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community and the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veterans service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active milit, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas the Haywood County, Haywood County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for Veterans County, Haywood County hereby declares from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, through Veterans Day, November the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Haywood County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November the sixth through November the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, adopted the sixteenth day of October twenty twenty-three.
Do you wanna make that a motion?
Make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Also, would like to recognize our facilities guy, Tim Sisk, who's done a great job last year of lighting up our courthouse. I know we had a lot of comments, so green light kit, you'll, you'll see it that week, and if anybody else, as the resolution was read, if you wanna do that in your private home or business, it would be a great step toward allowing you to show your support for all of our veterans.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, is to request approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of a mobile communication support vehicle from Mobile Concepts Specialty Vehicles utilizing the GSA contract, GS thirty F zero zero one two T, per exception to the competitive bidding requirements, and approval for county managers to execute all related documents. Our Emergency Management Officer, Zach Kuntz, is here. Welcome, Zach.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. Tonight I bring before you this resolution, the request to purchase this mobile communication vehicle from Mobile Concepts Specialties. Before I go through the resolution, I have it here in front of me, just a little background history on this. We applied for a grant through North Carolina Emergency Management in March of this past year to acquire a mobile communication vehicle to help support incident response in the field when it comes to radio communications and, and onsite support. We were awarded this grant in July of this year, and the board accepted that on July the seventeenth and appropriated the funds to acquire this vehicle. We did go to bid for this vehicle, but it came in about a hundred thousand dollars over our budget that the grant was awarded. So I had to go back to the drawing board and see if we could find a, find a vehicle to fit our needs, and we were able to do so under a preposition government contract with Mobile Concepts Specialty Vehicles that came in at about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, just a little bit over that. So tonight we're requesting to, to purchase this vehicle and not use the competitive bid process because of the preposition contract and this in place.
Questions?
I appreciate you going through this process and looking after our, our dollars here. I know that this is something that we've talked about many times, and it, it was definitely a huge need during the floods that we've been talking about tonight, so definitely needed in the county for sure.
Yes, sir.
That's two meetings in a row you guys have came with a cost savings recommendation. Y'all doing good.
We're trying, we're trying, and this, this gives us the ability to actually outfit this new vehicle with updated equipment, which didn't give us the ability in the past with what we had previously seeked out there. We've been able to get a scope of work change from the state, and we'll be getting new radios for it also.
This fits what your needs are, and you're not having to cut corners, too bad.
No, ma'am, it's, it's not cutting any corners on us on this.
Yep. Any motion, we approve item four.
Second.
Any other discussion? Didn't mean to cut y'all off.
Thanks, y'all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we want to post. It's unanimous. Okay, our final, our next order of business is appointments, and we have one to request approval of appointment of Sally Dixon to fulfill an unexpired term on the Smoky Mountain Event Center through February fifth, twenty twenty-six, at which point she'll be eligible for reappointment to a. at which point she'll be eligible for reappointment to a full three-year term.
The Fire Grounds Board approves her to, they're, they're willing to recommend her to.
Very good. You wanna make that a motion, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have a second? Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we do not have a closed session, and I'll entertain that we, a motion to adjourn unless someone has any other business. entertain a motion, we adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Beat you.
You beat me?
I beat you.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're dismissed, everybody be safe out there.